We're going to start this meeting. I'd like to call this December 9th School Board Meeting to order. Lynette Conrad, will you lead us in the pledge on your last meeting?
...of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I think that's the best our pledge of allegiance has ever sounded in this room. Guys, thank you. Moving to number two, adoption of the agenda.
Madam President, I move that we adopt the agenda as submitted with the exception of item number 10 and pull that for a future meeting.
Second by Candace, all those in favor?
Aye.
Moving on, number three, Superintendent's Report. Mr. Stokes, I see you're somewhere in this sea of red.
Thank you, Madam President. It is my honor to be here tonight, and I'd like to make a special welcome to our friends from Seeliger. And I'd like to turn a little time over to our music teacher, Mrs. Law. And she has some very special guests who are here to sing some Christmas songs to us.
Golden river, silver bells, white dog winter dressed in snow. Berries of red, trees of green, purple and blue, the winter night's breeze.
Well, we think we better cut up a little bit. And I told them to feel free to maybe point to you if it's appropriate. I don't know, have you been naughty or nice?
Nice.
Oh, you better watch out, you better not cry, you better not pout, I'm telling you why. Santa Claus is coming to town. Making a list, checking it twice, he's gonna find out who's naughty or nice. Santa Claus is coming to town. He sees you when you're sleeping, he knows when you're awake. He knows if you've been bad or good, so be that for goodness sake. Oh, you better watch out, you better not cry, you better not pout, I'm telling you why. Santa Claus is coming to town. Oh, you better watch out, you better not cry, you better not pout, I'm telling you why. Santa Claus is coming to town. Making a list, checking it twice, he's gonna find out who's naughty or nice. Santa Claus is coming to town. Children of the River Lake will have a jubilee. They're gonna build a toilet and some all around the Christmas tree. Oh, you better watch out, you better not cry, you better not pout, I'm telling you why. Santa Claus is coming, Santa Claus is coming, Santa Claus is coming to town.
I think we're done, but we will invite you to our concert next Wednesday at 6:00 PM at Seeliger.
Yeah, we're gonna have more people.
Hope you all encounter with love and see your faces there. 7:00 PM Wednesday.
The whole school plus school people.
6:00.
Yeah, we're actually on TV. We're actually on TV at home.
Thank you, parents, for bringing him. We totally enjoyed this.
Madam President, members of the board. Kaylee hopes that all the energy has not left the room. But if it's okay with you, we'll carry on here with some informational items. First off, and this may be on Jake's list to mention, but Carson High School students will have a minimum day on December the 18th, and students will be dismissed there at 11:40. And on Friday, December the 13th, or sorry, the 19th, Friday, the 19th, there will also be a minimum day for all of the secondary schools. So Pioneer High School students will be released at 11:30. Carson High School students will be released at 11:40, and our middle schools will release at 11:50. And then all of our students will be released from school on December 22nd, and classes will resume on Monday, January the 5th. And there are still a number of holiday activities, concerts, and gatherings that you can find out when all of those might be on our webpage, www.carsoncityschools.com. And I want to just let board members know, and some of our patrons who may have known Laurel Terry, she passed away this last week. And Laurel was a longtime teacher, administrator, and very dedicated staff member. She served for almost 30 years in our school district and did some tremendous things for us. She will certainly be missed. Her services will be held at Carson Middle School in the gymnasium on December the 20th, and the time for that service will be 11:00 AM. And certainly a sad time, and we send our condolences to Tim, Laurel's husband, and the rest of Laurel's family. I was wondering, Madam President, if you would join me at the podium? As you know, Stacy Wilkie has served admirably as the president of this board for the past year. And during that time, Stacy has met with me on a regular basis, as we've talked about the work of the school district. She's faithfully attended meetings prior to each of our board meetings, as we've talked about the meeting, the different items, items of business, and some of the ongoing operations of the school district. And I just want you to know, it's really been a pleasure for me to work with Stacy. And not only at our local level, but Stacy has been recognized at a state level, where she is well thought of, and has served on the Nevada Association of School Boards as a director, representing this body, and also, most recently, has been named as the, I'm not sure the official title, but she's in charge of the legislative activities that will be going on in the upcoming legislation. So wish her the best. And just have a little plaque that recognizes her service, and I want to say thanks, and we look forward to your continuing service on the board. But thanks so much for your efforts here.
Thank you.
I can't pull in Townsend one.
No, no. We'd love to hear Stacy say a few words, and then we also have some other recognitions tonight that we'd like to make to other board members who will be leaving our body.
I was hoping this was next meeting when there's nobody here. I just want to thank you all. It's been a great year. The first time I was on the school board, I never made it up to president, so this was a new experience for me, and I was very proud to accept it. And I hope you've enjoyed the short meetings. I've tried very hard. And, and, just for a note, and the record will show, not one meeting started late. I was here on time every single meeting. So, thank you much, and look forward to the next four years.
So as Stacy's, one of Stacy's last formal duties, I'll ask that Trustee Conrad and Trustee Stoll come to the podium as well.
Wow. Notice the difference? I'm just saying. I give somebody a bad time. We'll do Candace first, because you've been here the longest. Candace, on behalf of the trustees, thank you so much for your service and stepping up when nobody else would. We appreciate it. You did great.
Thank you.
We're gonna miss you, but we will pull you back in on our planning stuff.
Thank you so much. Appreciate the effort.
Thank you, Candace.
What can you say about Lynette?
See, they didn't tell me we were doing plaques. I could've had a lot of fun. I could've been Dr. Dempo today, but I wasn't. So I guess we'll just be nice, and thank you for, what, five years now, right?
Yeah, something like that.
And it's been fun.
Yeah.
Good luck, and we're pulling you back in too, using your expertise.
Thank you very much.
And we will be missed.
I'd just like to add my thanks. It has been tremendous to work with the board, and certainly those who have given their Tuesday nights, and been professional and provided oversight, and the volunteer hours that have come with the job, and your patience with the things that we're trying to do, and the support that you've given is greatly appreciated, and I just wish you all the best in whatever's coming next. And thank you again. Madam President, I just would like to add a wish for happy holidays to all of our board members.
That doesn't mean you get out of the meeting on the 23rd, except Lynette. Moving on to board reports, we'll start with Kaylee at Pioneer.
Thank you, Madam President and members of the board. Pioneer will be offering after-school tutoring through January 18th to all students from 2:00 to 3:00 PM. We will have dog houses from the construction program that are for sale to the public. For additional information, please contact Dave Johnson at the school. We have five teams participate in a student three-on-three basketball tournament. On January 15th, Pioneer High School will have a blood drive, so sign up to give blood and be a lifesaver. January 15th. A few students have put together an after-school fitness program open to any student. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Kaylee. Jake Jones from Carson High.
All right, so at Carson High, first, we'd like to extend our gratitude to Mr. Stokes for attending our academic ceremony last night, academic letter ceremony last night. That was a very fun event. It was cool to see how many students have such awesome GPAs. There's a lot of sophomores that have a 3.9 after their freshman year, and that's absolutely incredible. This week, we have cookies and cramb for all freshmen studying for finals. In the library after school, they get to come in and eat cookies and get tutored for any subject by Link Crew. We have a wrestling duel versus Wooster tomorrow night at 6:00 in the big gym at CHS. Friday is Ugly Sweater Day, so that is always a fun, fun Friday in December. And also on Friday, we have the annual ski movie here at the community center at 7:00 PM. It's a fundraiser for our ski team, and it's a fun night, and the movie is really amazing, so come and check that out. Saturday, there's an ACT at 8:00 AM in upstairs cafeteria. Next week is finals week. Yay. Wednesday, I'm pretty excited this year. Oh, yeah, two more to go, just two more. Wednesday is A1, A3, and AB55 finals. Thursday is B2 and B4 finals with an early out at 11:40, and Friday is A5 and B6 finals with an early out at 11:40 as well. Tuesday night is a musical theater concert here at the community center. There's a recommended $4 donation, but otherwise, it's free to get in, and it's at 7:00 PM. And then Wednesday, after you go to Seeliger's choir concert, you can come support the CHS choir at the, here at the community center. It's another $4 donation, and it is at 7:00 PM as well. Thursday after school, we have the alumni brunch for student council alumni, so any student council alumni from Carson High School that you guys know, they will be there, so if you want to come and eat some food, all the board members are definitely invited. And Mr. Gassio Bo, I expect Tony to be there. Exactly. He better. College does not mean anything anymore. I'm totally kidding. Please do not put that in the record. Thursday at 5:15 is the first home basketball game of the season. That's the girls varsity team, and then the boys varsity team is at, or boys varsity is at 7:00 PM against Spanish Springs. Next Friday is Dress for Success Day, also known as Fancy Friday, so that's gonna be a lot more bearable than Ugly Sweater Day, and we're hoping that the placebo of students dressing nicer, they will do better on their finals. Winter break begins after Friday, and check the CHS website for basketball games and for other events that we have. We have officially scheduled Winter Fest. It is the week of January 26th through the 31st. It's gonna be called Winter Flicks. The theme is like Netflix and TV shows, so it's gonna be a lot of fun to put on this year. And we are very excited to host that week, because it's the last formal week that we get this year, and our seniors are gonna do a great job putting it on. And then next semester, we also have a few new things that we haven't done before, so we are getting all the kinks worked out, so I will announce that to you guys in January, hopefully. But we have some very exciting things with some new speakers that we haven't done before, and a lot of things that will get our community and our school a lot closer together, so we're very excited for the next semester. So that concludes my report. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Candace?
For Seeliger Elementary, we have the PTO meeting in the library. That's on Monday, the 15th at 3:30. This is also the date that the angel tree gifts are due. And then, as you heard already, on Wednesday, the 17th, we have the Seeliger Singers in the multipurpose room at 6:00 PM. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Lynette? Ms. Laurel?
For the Early Childhood Center, they now have baseline data from Curiosity Corner, so they're going to use that to work on improving their student performance. The staff is also working on improving the transition of the preschoolers into kindergarten, and they are looking to increase their parent involvement by moving their parent meetings to a family-based community activity. For Fritsch Elementary School, we'd like to start off by expressing our condolences to Mrs. Gary, whose husband passed away last weekend, and she's visiting her mom now, I understand, in Nebraska, so we are sad for her. Also at Fritsch, the second grade music program is December 11th at 5:30 in the multipurpose room, and December 17th, which is a busy Wednesday, is the band and choir concert at 5:30 in the multipurpose room. So hit 'em all. And December 19th at 2:20 on the last day of school is the school-wide sing-along, so if you really want to spread Christmas cheer, that's the place to be, because they are singing loud. And then a couple things I wanted to mention about Carson Middle School, so Joe, I hope I don't steal anything. And the first LEGO League regional qualifying competition is this Saturday, December 13th, at Eagle Valley Middle School, and it starts at 9:00 and goes till about 3:00. And CMS has three teams, Fritsch has three teams, and I'm sure there's some other FLL teams from the other schools in the area. The robotic game begins at 12:00, which is the competition part, so I'd like to invite anyone who's interested in coming to see how the teams are doing to Eagle Valley to see that. And then just to thank, because this is the first year and a few years that it's, they've had the LEGO robotic teams at Carson Middle School, teachers Josh Billings and Rhonda Holloway have been helping with that. Parent Al Wiggs Norris and Jim Vasquez have also been helping, and so has Barry Morgan. And then also, last week, I had the opportunity to attend the Carson Middle School winter concert, choir concert, so I'd like to commend Bree Valley for an excellent concert. And then I just want to share a story that I think happens all over the place in this district, but we don't get to hear it all the time. Two middle school students, Mrs. Valley has her choir students invite various people, so there were a number, a number of teachers there to support the students that were in choir from the middle school and everything, but I thought it was really neat that two of the middle school students had invited their kindergarten teacher. And Sue Maples came, because she is so awesome. But I just think that goes to show that we have staff in this district that care about kids from the beginning all the way through, and that's just one story, but, okay, now I'm crying. But I think it really goes to say a lot about the quality of the people that work with our children every day, and part of what makes me happy to send my kids to school here, so.
Yeah, I too got to attend the Carson Middle School performance last week, and it's always a good performance. I think Mrs. Valley does a great job with the kids. She has so many kids, she tries to get on stage and somehow miraculously pulls it off all the time. So, so kudos to her. At Carson High School, the library, if anybody has any overdue books and fines are involved, they're actually doing a canned food drive in lieu of fines. So for every canned food you bring in, they take a dollar off your fines. So it's a good deal. It's going on this week, so if that pertains to you, think about that. I don't think it pertains to me, but I'm not sure.
Mine's way overdue then.
There's a meet and greet in the library for girls interested in engineering. Jenna Damon from NDOT's gonna be at the library on the 12th, this Friday, to talk about women in engineering and to encourage, encourage women at the high school to, you know, if they're interested in science and engineering, to follow that dream. Let's see, winter, annual winter instrumental concert, did we, I don't know if we said that yet, but that's going on Wednesday, tomorrow, 7:00 PM here at the community center. And then ROTC naval scholarship information's happening Friday during AB55 in the library, so anybody interested in getting some information about the ROTC naval scholarship, you just need to get a pass and go down there and listen to that. And then if I under, if I got this right, Jake, I think you were the senior, senior spotlight, right? Is that what we're calling it? So just real quick, Jake is, he's on the varsity tennis and golf teams, National Honor Society for the last three years, and considering attending Harvey Mudd College or Colorado School of Mines for engineering. So Jake's one example of all the tremendous kids we have at the high school, so congratulations. And that concludes my report.
Ron?
Just Laurel, on that, the first LEGO robotics competition in Eagle Valley, the times that I got, were from 8:00 to 4:00.
Okay.
So I just want to let that, let everyone know that that is going on.
Double-check to make sure we get the kids there.
Yeah, we just, just want to make sure, because that's, that's really tremendous to, to go watch, watch these kids in this, this type of competition. So, Madam President, with that.
There are a lot of people at Empire's Math Night tonight. It was a good turnout. It's still going. Had to leave so I wouldn't be late. And, what else? I have something else. NASB's in full form right now. Oh, because it's one of Nick's last meetings. We did this to Candace last meeting, and since I was so rude and Steve helped me out, I'm gonna read this one this time. But there's one from NASB, and one from Harry Reid, and then the one from Dean Heller I'll read, because it's the longest. And it says, "In honor of your service as a member of the Carson City School Board, your dedication and commitment to Nevada's education is commendable. Best wishes on all your future endeavors." So we have those two. And that concludes my report. Oh, hello. Association reports.
It's all right, Madam President, I'd remind you this time. Brian Wallace, President of Oransby County Education Association. OCA would also like to congratulate both Trustee Conrad and Trustee Stoll on your years of service for the Carson City School District, for every single kid that you've spoken up for, every single concern that you've been able to weigh in on and give great thought to, especially in keeping the staff members also at the forefront every single time. I think all the accolades each of you have received at this point, and that goes for the whole board, really, just continue to really speak to what we're doing here locally. It is great to always come here on a Tuesday night and know who I'm working with and who I'm working for every single time, and being able to take that back to our members each and every single time, knowing what I hear from others out there. And that our working relationship, hopefully at one point, can truly be a model for the rest of the state, knowing a few of them need, need some role models right now, and that legislative members will listen to Superintendent Stokes, listen to you, President Wilkie, and knowing that both of you will continue that both of you will continue to be involved locally and hopefully at the state level as we continue to move forward within the capital city. On behalf of OCA and all its members, thank you very much, trustees.
Thanks, Brian. We do appreciate the relationship we have with you and the teachers and I think we are a model for the state in the...
I really think we are. And I keep stressing it. I know I have our rule meeting coming up this week and it's always difficult when I go there and we do a roundtable of what's happening out there in the rules and what, and it's unfortunate piece of it, what they truly face because they just don't have the funding or they haven't been able to build the other mechanisms or find the support maybe locally with what they want to do, something as simplistic as getting wireless into the buildings and being prepared for S-FAC that's coming down. But knowing where we've gone through work with Trustee Swarzick and other community members, our strategic plan that all of you help truly support, you're right, ma'am. We're there and I'm hoping a few legislative members listen to us as we move forward. Thank you.
I plan on being very loud.
You'll see there a lot.
Yeah. It's one way for me to get out of work.
Don't tell me you're not waiting for me to do it.
Time to move on to public comment. This is a time that the public can come and comment on any item that's not on the agenda. You have three minutes. Please identify yourself for the record. Seeing nobody move, we'll move on. Number seven, recognition and introduction of parent volunteer, Jerry Garrett. And I don't see him. I think there was a mis, oh, he is here? Oh, good. It's Jerry.
Welcome. Thank you for coming.
Oh, thank you.
We wanted to acknowledge your appreciation and dedication to the education of the children and of Carson City School District and for your work with the watchdogs that you started at Fritsch and now we hear you're very involved at Carson Middle School.
We're trying.
It's always trying at the middle schools.
Trying to get some traction at the middle school, but yeah, we're trying to get that rolling and working diligently to make something happen over there. It's not quite as easy as the elementary school, but we're making some headway.
Well, we appreciate all your hard work and thank you so much.
Well, thank you very much. Thank you, really appreciate it.
Thanks, Laurel. You're welcome.
Thanks, Richard. Well, this was a surprise. I just heard about this afternoon. And I've been working with, I was just listening to Laurel's comment a while ago about bringing Mrs. Maples to an event and I've been, I've got grandchildren that went to Fritsch since kindergarten and I've been a little bit attached there volunteering in the classroom since, and I think I met you there about the second grade or first grade or something. And I know how attached the kids are. I have a granddaughter who still goes back and she's in the seventh grade now and still goes back and sees her teachers at Fritsch. And I've been more involved for the last two or three years in the watchdog program at Fritsch. And I was made to feel like a staff member there. I mean, I really was part of the staff for a couple of years and this, if the rest of the school district runs the way Fritsch and now Carson Middle School runs, I can see why it's so successful. It's just been an amazing experience to be part of this. And I just hope I can make more progress at the middle school with the parent volunteer program, the watchdog or whatever that's going to turn into. But it's just been an amazing experience to work as a volunteer with the school district and I can see why it's so successful and I really enjoyed myself. And this year it's taken a different twist because I've been able to work in one of the seventh grade science classes, working with a couple of problem children. It's in, not the remedial class necessarily, but in one of the slower classes. And the first quarter of this year, it's just been an extra rewarding experience, different than I've had before. And it's just, it's been a really unique experience, maybe more rewarding than other things I've done before. So we're just trying, I'm trying to find a niche to make this program work differently and it's been fun. So I really appreciate this. Thanks so much to everybody.
We appreciate it, too.
Thank you.
Wait, wait, you got one more comment?
Jerry, I was just going to say one more thing because he has been helping out. We were just spending today doing the cookie dough pickup for the PTA fundraiser at Carson Middle School. But also, in case you guys didn't know, Jerry received an award this year from the Nevada PTA and he received the Auntie Lynch Outstanding Parent Volunteer for the entire state for the whole year. So he's definitely getting recognized because he does put in so much time and helps at the schools. He's very dedicated.
It's been easy. It's just been a wonderful experience here, so thank you very much, everybody.
Madam President, if I may, along with Trustee Crossman, I've had a chance to interact with Jerry at the schools and he is, I'd love to hire him, I tell you. He truly is a guy that has the best interest of our students at heart and he's so reliable and he's just an open, genuine, caring individual, much like a lot of the people who come and volunteer and help us in our schools. We're very blessed to have people in our community who have the desire to use their knowledge, skills, and ability and to reach out and to interact with our students. And I'm greatly appreciative of Jerry and those like him who serve in our community.
And thanks to Trustee Conrad. This was one of the things that she started here and it's turned into a great event and we're so glad you brought that with you. Okay, all the warm fuzzy feelings are all over now. We're going to business. Number eight, presentation and possible action of Financial FY 2014 Annual Independent Audit and Report of Financial Statements as Required as NRS 354.624 for Possible Action. Mr. Feeling. And I just have one comment before you start. This is the first time I've ever gotten audit on Thanksgiving.
Oh.
Somebody was trying to get out of some family stuff, I think, but I'm just saying, you don't have to work holidays.
No further detail or comment from you regarding that, maybe privately sometime, but thank you, trustees. Today, we, well, over the weekend, you had some light reading regarding the financial wellness of the district. We have our completed fiscal year 14 audit as done by the Bullard Macy Group. We have Mr. Dave Silva here tonight that's going to take us through a short presentation regarding the audit and what they saw and some kind of final outcomes. When he's done with that, if you have any questions for him or myself, we'll be happy to answer any questions that we can. So.
Great, thank you. Good evening. How is everybody? I know you're not expecting warm fuzzy, so I will surprise you. I also have my partner, Melinda Torvina, in here, sitting there offering support. But I do actually want to start off maybe a little bit differently this evening. I am struck by something that I really must comment on. We are so proud to work with your district and what a fine group of people we get to work with over a period of a number of months. And sitting here this evening and listening to your comments and the other presentations, it's really very pervasive throughout the district, the kindness, the dedication, the, in fact, inspiration. So I want to thank you all and certainly I want to extend the thanks to the folks at the district that help us do our work and we're very appreciative. So, warm fuzzy, thank you very much. And actually, I do have, you know, a fair amount of good news to report to you this evening and I'm going to keep this pretty short and if I go too fast, please stop me and I'll certainly answer anything that I can. And AJ also extended that offer. Just a couple of things that I am required to report to you and actually, this is really the crux of the matter. You know, we have to issue a number of reports based upon our audit work and I've listed for you there those reports that you can find inside the audit and they're all good news. They're what we now are able to call unmodified reports, which, another term that you might see or hear are clean opinions. Basically, it's good. We didn't find anything that was of any particular concern that would cause us to alter any of our reports. The one item that I am required to report to you is on page 51 of your financial statements and we're required by statute to report any potential budgetary violations. And we noted just a couple and they are disclosed, like I said, on page 51. And really, to put that into what I believe is a proper perspective, you know, we're talking about $131,000 in potential over expenditures and that equates to less than one-fourth of 1% of your total expenditures. And probably, again, at least in my eyes, more importantly, these were really just procedural matters and the funds concerned did not report total over expenditures. It was just a procedural matter in the way that the budget was crafted and the way that the final expenditures came in. Nevertheless, like I said, we are required by statute to report that to you, so there it is. In my opinion, nothing for you to be concerned about, however. As you know, you receive a large amount of federal assistance and because of that, a great deal of our audit effort is geared towards the audit of the federal programs, the federal monies. And as a result of that audit effort, we have no findings to report. So, once again, I think really good news and that is all due to the terrific staff that you all have, lots of very, very dedicated people. Certainly a big focus of what your finance department does and what you folks do throughout the year with respect to the fiscal matters. And then what we do for you on an annual basis is to really focus in on fund balance and matters that concern fund balance. And for a school district, really, I believe, and I think we've talked about this in years past, it really makes sense to look at your general fund and your special revenue funds as being really your operating funds, as where all the, not all of it, but where a great deal of the business of the school district occurs. So for this past fiscal year, ending June 30th, 2014, total fund balance of those general and special revenue funds increased about $1.2 million or nearly 10%. And that's certainly a lot different than what we've seen over the past few years where we were looking at decreases and potential concerns about the ending fund balance, particularly going forward. But good news for 2014. So I would characterize your fund balances as being healthy. And as further explanation of that, let me offer this for you. You know, the GFOA Government Finance Officers Association publishes or provides a few different benchmarks for local governments. And one of those is the percentage of fund balance to total expenditures. And their benchmark is, what they recommend that you attempt to achieve is have a fund balance that is equal to somewhere between one and two months' average expenditures. And mathematically, that comes out to about 17%. And for you folks, this year, you hit that target at just about 17.8%. So that's more good news and that's certainly an indicator of financial health and fiscal responsibility. So, good news. Talked a few minutes ago, just real briefly, about the federal funds and we've got a little chart there that kind of shows you where you've been over the past few years with respect to the amount of federal money that you receive and therefore manage and manage in a very commendable fashion. The work that we're required to do on those federal funds is really very significant and, as I mentioned, a lot of audit effort is extended towards the funds. And we perform special procedures on about 37%, so quite a bit of that federal money. And again, no findings, so very commendable. Any questions so far? Yes?
And I think I saw that of that amount, that includes the Race to the Top, I believe, and that was about a little over $3 million, correct?
It does. We can actually go right to that. I can get the page number for you. Pages 114 and 115, so way in the back. And Race to the Top for 2014, the amount of funds audited was almost $2.4 million the past fiscal year. Any other questions? Okay, the last thing that I want to cover, I don't have a slide for, so I'm kind of going off-program and I promise I, well, at least I will try to not bore you here for the next few minutes. But I think it's kind of important because we do spend a lot of time talking about funds, your general fund in particular, and we talk about the fund balance, talk about budgeted expenditures versus actual expenditures, talk about the variance. But one of the things that maybe we don't talk enough about is on page 15 of your financial statement, if you would, if you've got it with you and if you wouldn't mind taking a look. You know, this is, in terms of the accounting profession and in terms of governmental accounting in particular, this is a fairly new type of financial statement and it's still evolving, changes every year to the format and what's included in it, what's not included. But basically, this came about close to 10 years ago now with what was called GASB-34, which at the time that GASB-34 came about, it completely changed the way that governments were required to do their financial reporting, especially for external requirements. At any rate, this is very similar to what you would find for many of your own businesses or any other private businesses. The idea being that a reader could look at this one particular statement and be able to identify what, in your folks' case, what the district owns and what it owes and then what's left over. And what's left over is what they call net position. And I wanted to point out for you all that that net position is at the bottom of the page. And if you take a look between, or take a look at the 2013 versus the 2014 amounts, you'll see that there is an increase and it happens to be a little over 2%. So, an increase in net position in what has still been a fairly challenging economy, to me speaks, again, to the competency of your folks, also the policies and the leadership that you all have provided. So certainly, great work and something that, again, we're real proud to be a part of. But this one particular financial... So an increase in net position in what has still been a fairly challenging economy, to me speaks, again, to the competency of your folks, also the policies and the leadership that you all have provided. So certainly, great work and something that, again, we're real proud to be a part of. But this one particular financial statement, if, you know, anybody asks you, do you guys ever receive a balance sheet? This is it, right here. It's not called a balance sheet. It's called a statement of net position, but it provides the same information that a balance sheet would. Little different format. Any questions on that? Okay, we are required to provide a few other things in connection with our audit. And you all did receive a separate letter from us, I believe. And those are really housekeeping items. I don't want to go as far as to say that it's a boilerplate letter, but it's awfully darn close. It'll let you know what we were required to do and what we did do. And it hones in, again, on the fact that there were no findings. Any audit and client adjustments have already been provided and recorded by A.J. and his staff. And the only other audit finding of any significance, and we talked about the fact that dollar-wise it is not significant, it was the information provided on page 51 with the potential over GASB, always, always coming up with something new. It doesn't stop. In fact, I would say it's probably escalated over the last three to four years. You all, I'm sure, remember when we had the big change to record the post-retirement benefits to throw a great, big, huge liability on your balance sheet, if you will. So there's more of that kind of stuff ahead with the pensions. And this is a requirement faced by every single governmental entity that has to provide external financial statements. And then, just as quickly as you get that taken care of, rest assured, there will be more. GASB has, I think, kind of the way that I look at it, GASB has really tried to work in a, not only make their work transparent, but help local governments with their efforts towards financial transparency. And I think all joking, counting jokes aside, I think that they're achieving that, but there is a cost to that, cost in time, cost in effort, probably a fair amount of frustration on parts, the part of board members like yourselves and other readers of the financial statements. But they're, they make the rules, so that's what we do. Okay. So our third year as your audit firm. And again, we can't thank you enough and really want you to know how proud we are to provide services to you. A.J.'s been just terrific to work with, as has all of his staff, and it certainly is a pleasure. Thank you all very much. Any questions?
Any questions? Ron?
You know, just, I guess, a point of clarification. On page three, we've got under other reporting required by government auditing standards. And you've got, in accordance with our government auditing standards, we have also issued our report dated November 30 on our consideration of the district's internal control over financial reporting. Now, I know on the back, you've got a report, but it's dated November 26. Is there another report that we're not seeing?
No, Ron, thank you for that. No, there isn't. And I think I would have to stand up here red-faced and tell you that that was something that is, was my error. It is the 26th.
Oh, it is? Okay. I didn't read it.
Thank you.
Just another question. Now, going forward, with the debt service fund, from 2013, in which we had more, significantly more in ad valorem taxes than 2014.
Yes.
Did you, was there a reason for, just for that? I mean, that was a significant decrease.
It was.
And I know assess valuations are kind of like in flux, but you would think that we have more in 2014, which we thought our low point was 2013. So what was your...
Good point. In fact, A.J. and I talked about this, I think, not even two weeks ago. And it was a correction of an error, right? Do you want to maybe fill in the blanks a little bit better?
So the district was notified by the Department of Taxation that there's three parts to the ad valorem taxes we receive. And one of those pieces is called centrally assessed, which is items, say, like a railroad or something like that, where it crosses county lines over pieces. And so there's a chunk of that that we would receive. So in the ZIP codes of Carson City, which go 89701 through 89706, historically, Carson City has received all of the property taxes associated with those ZIP codes. Correctly, that, it was found to be an error, that 89704, 89705, and 89706 actually should be going, I believe it's to Washoe, Line, and Douglas, part of those centrally assessed values. So that's why there was a decrease in the amount of the centrally assessed taxes. So you see that decrease year to year. We were aware of that, that was budgeted for. So that wasn't, I'll say, it was budgeted for. It kind of caught me off guard, but I was so fresh, I didn't quite know. But then, finding out about that, that was what had happened. So it was a correction caught at the state level, then filtered on down to us.
So then, going forward, what is it looking like then? Was the adjustment made then in 2014?
Right. So the adjustment was made in 2014. And going forward, we haven't received anything as far as what's going to happen for the next fiscal year, what to expect. Property values are up going into the next year, so I would, there's this issue with abatement. You never are quite sure what you're going to get because there's this 3% cap, but it does appear that property values are increasing. So that should help us out, probably would not get the full impact of that increase, but it should increase going into next year.
So we're probably going to be okay in our debt service fund then, is what I'm getting at?
Right. And actually, and that is something, too, that Marty Johnson is very aware of. And so when he's doing his calculations, looking forward to make sure that we're able to, there's this 50% of your, in any given year, 50% of your expenditures you need to have in reserve. And he's very aware of that as he's going through. And when we were starting to put those numbers together and we looked at that drop, he was, you know, he was using that drop going forward. He was aware of that in his calculations. So, yeah. We can cover our debt service.
Then, just one final question for Mr. Silva. Now, I know you're auditing the financial statements for the year ended 2014.
Yes, sir.
And you presented some, you know, kind of nice things. Okay, in your opinion, in going forward, in your discussions with management or with our management, is there anything that you see going forward that we need to be aware of as far as the effects on, because of Tesla or anything that might be out there? And I know it might be a little bit beyond the scope of what you're charged to do, but we'd like to keep hearing these good things each year.
Absolutely. I think, you know, I've, hopefully, I've been saying this every year, and perhaps even to the extent of sounding like a broken record and becoming a little bit trite with it. And I certainly don't mean to. I think it is absolutely critical to keep a very close eye on fund balance. And the way to do that, of course, is through diligent budgeting, as diligent as budgeting can be. And budgeting is not easy, and I am sure all you folks appreciate that. It's very, very difficult because things are very fluid. In terms of impact that Tesla is going to have on northern Nevada, I have to say, I'm very, very optimistic about what's going to happen in and with northern Nevada over the next several years. Can I tell you why I'm optimistic tonight? Not particularly. But I do know that I am not the only one that is optimistic. And I think some of our business leaders, as you folks are, would express the same sentiments. Nevertheless, I don't think that at any time do you not want to keep a very diligent focus and eye on your fund balance. You're a fairly large district. Lots of money comes in, lots of money goes out. There are mandates that are presented to you that you have no choice but to comply with. And every day you wake up, whatever you do is going to cost money. And, you know, again, thanks to the efforts of your staff at the district, you do a very good job of keeping your eye on the money. But I would encourage you to never, never let go of that. And I don't know if that even began to address, Ron, where you're getting at, but I think, you know, maybe a little early yet to, you know, have much of an understanding of the good things ahead of us. Can we say for sure that all the difficult times are past? Probably not. So, thank you all.
Any other questions? Steve?
This may be more for H.A. than, I don't think I'm questioning the audit whatsoever. I'm just kind of curious. You drew my attention to our federal funds, and I'm just, it's interesting to note that our, that our final budget for 2014 versus our, the actual funds we received was, there was a pretty good-sized difference between what we budgeted and what we received. Is that because we didn't need the monies, but they were there?
I'm looking at page 28.
Okay. Sure.
And this might be more of a question in depth than you're, than we have info to answer tonight.
On the surface of it, yeah. The, I know with Race to the Top, that the, initially, we would spend, I was thinking it was about 3.4 in here, it's about $3.5 million. And so you're really, you're only recognizing that revenue as it's spent. And so in that, in this last year, they only spent about the 2.3. I don't know if there's any special ed...
I think that's the largest one.
Yeah. Within special education, that, that as well with IDEA, I mean, the revenue you're recognizing is really only, you only recognize it as you're using it, essentially. So if the expenditures that are attributed to IDEA spending are less than what you are anticipating, it'll show less revenue. But that will carry forward into future years, so you can access it then.
So what you're saying, in a way, we were being conservative by budgeting high in these cases, because we, I understand what you're saying. With a lot of these funds, in essence, we receive what we need to use.
Correct.
And we just didn't need to use that much.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? It is an action item.
I move that the Carson City School District Board of Trustees accept the Carson City School District Annual Financial Report and audit for fiscal year ending June 30, 2014, and instructed the director of Fiscal Services to file the report as public record in accordance with NRS 354.624.
Second by Ron. Any other board discussion on the motion? Any public comment on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Audit passes. Thank you so much for your service. We appreciate all your hard work.
Appreciate you. Merry Christmas.
Thank you. Ms. President?
Yes.
A.J., just out of curiosity, remind me, are our agreements for the audits, are those three-year agreements?
It's, it was an initial three years with options for renewal.
Okay. I'm just asking where we stand now. I mean, I think this was a, you know, I think I've enjoyed seeing these.
I'm very satisfied.
Okay. Okay, so we can renew this for more options is where we stand.
I would...
And that'd be up to you.
We can't discuss it.
I'm asking where we... I'm not asking...
Don't get me in trouble on my last, next to last meeting.
I'm not asking to renew this. It's not our thing. I'm just asking where we stand at this point.
Yep. So we have the option to extend, which, well, I'll look into further.
Okay, that's all I was curious.
It will be brought up at a future board meeting.
It'll be agendized.
It'll be agendized.
Madam President, if I just couldn't, I'm sorry, I would really just like to publicly thank my accounting and payroll staff in that time that, you know, before I got here and after Mr. Trilly had left, they kept that ship floating and sailing in the right direction, did an outstanding job. And so much of what I did coming in, I was so focused on fiscal year 15 and getting that budget ready. And they just kept everything going, just did an outstanding job. So I just want to thank them.
Yeah, and thank them for us, too. We do appreciate all their hard work, and we do know, we usually get to thank them at an audit dinner, but I didn't see my invitation this year. Okay, moving on to number nine. Thank you. This was actually the first time I ever read the whole audit report because I was going over the hill and I forgot my book, so. And I wasn't driving, so it worked really well. Ratification of non-monetary contractual language between the Carson City School District, the Carson City Building Administrators, Carson Educational Support Association, and Carson City Health Services Personnel Association for 2013 to 2015. Dr. Delphine.
Thank you, Madam President, trustees, staff. Just for the record, I am not in charge of the audit dinner. Mr. Fuhling, it's your baby. I'm just saying. We usually work it out with the high school. There's some food going on, so no pressure. Well, with that, happy holidays, or a good friend of mine would say, Merry Christmas Hanukkah. Kind of covered all in there. Figuring that our contract for all bargaining groups was supposed to be for 2013 to 2015, I'm just getting this under the wire. So I'm happily here to let you know that we are pretty much done with the language polishing and sanding, and all the corners are as smooth as we can get it. It was a great effort between all the associations. I want to thank OCEA, which we, back in October, if you remember, just to give you a historical framework for all this, we all got together and ratified the monetary items as a group. And that was a precedent-setting time for all of us here in our district, if not across the state. So from that time till now, I've been working pretty much one-on-one with the associations to polish up those language changes. And they're pretty general for all of them. We reduced the number of staff workdays by two, except for the year-round staff in classified. We updated all the salary schedules, and I want to thank my staff for doing that. There was a lot of numbers to do and undo and redo for all the contracts. And we cleaned up the formatting and page numbering. And then specifically to each of the groups with the Nurses Association, it was decided that the chief nurse would be removed from the bargaining unit, actually. So that was a major change for that unit and for the classified. We moved the MOU that was about the bilingual services pilot program into the contract itself. So now we have that stipend going on permanently. And I have to tell you, it's been worth every penny. We've gotten a lot of work from folks that are bilingual, especially in the front office, in customer service, in greeting families, and being able to really, you know, reach out and do the family engagement like we really want to as a first point of contact at those sites. And we cleaned up, again, some outdated sick leave language from the classified. And I want to say that with all the units, that we really worked hard at cleaning up any of the language that didn't matter anymore and just dropped it pretty much. And with the administration, really, no significant language changes at all. So I am happy to take any questions you may have, and also relieved to let you know we're done for this year.
Seeing none. Seeing none, this is an action item.
Madam President?
My last action. I move that the Carson City School District Board of Trustees ratify the non-monetary contract language between the Carson City Building Administrators, Carson Educational Support Association, Carson City Health Service Personnel Association, and the Carson City School District for 2013 to 2015.
Second by Laurel. Any other board discussion? Any public comment? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
You are ratified.
Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Conrad.
Moving on to number 11, presentation and discussion of proposed changes to the following CCSD policy. First reading, policy 910, district-wide parental involvement for discussion only. Ms. Duckery.
Good evening, Madam President, members of the Warren Senior Administration. We bring to you tonight a revision of policy 9110. Under No Child Left Behind Act of 2001, we are required to have a parent involvement policy. In the past, this policy has been authorized under IASA, Improving America's School Act, and the various forms, the title that these title programs have been funded under at the federal level. So it's been a while since we've had a revision to this policy. I think it was 2008. So we were very fortunate this time around because of the establishment by our superintendent of the community PLC. We were able to bring together a group of parents and district, district employees. But I would say 75% of our group of 12 who reviewed the policy at the community PLC last month were parents, and parents that represented various facets of our schools. And so they actually took this policy apart and gave their input. Tonight, we are going over the policy with you. When we come to the next meeting, we will be bringing the regulations. And they had a lot of comments and a lot of revisions for the regulations piece of this. But I just want to go over very briefly with you some of the big important changes here in the policy. For one thing, we've changed the citation because it was incorrect in the new law. But also, we are changing the name of the policy from parent involvement, which is the old philosophy of we impart information on to parents, to family and parent engagement as true collaborators in children's education. So that's really the big change. And actually, is kind of even more forward-thinking because the legislation under NCLB still goes with the old parent involvement philosophy. But we're able to go forward and, and include this. So you can see in the policy where we've made some changes. And for example, we don't have school improvement plans anymore. We have school performance plans. And there's parent engagement and family engagement in that. We are reaching out to make sure that parents of children, all children, children with disabilities, children who speak English as a second language, are all included in, in what happens at school. And then you can see down, as we go further through the policy, just some changes in, in a lot of that language in, in terms of the whole family, the parent and the family, and not just that we are reaching out. And then on the second page, just some more examples of that. And as, again, as we bring you the regulations, in the next meeting, you'll see some more specific ways in which we are recommending parent and family engagement. And this speaks not just to Title I, but to parent and family engagement. I'm looking to Mr. Pavlakis to clarify for me, for the, for all parent and family engagement, correct?
Under NRS.
Okay. Under NRS. So this covers all of that.
Laurel?
Couple points. First off, under the bottom half for the parent and family engagement, between parents, families, and schools, it's the first paragraph above A. And then later in AB, and F, we talk about parents, guardians, and families. But we don't talk about guardians in CD and E, or in the beginning. So I'm just wondering.
Yes. And I did not add the guardians piece. So I, yes, we do need to clarify that. We just, when I handed it off, it was parents and families. So we just need to clarify that and make it consistent.
Make sure we've got guardians everywhere, so we're not leaving them out.
Yes.
And then the third paragraph, the district and its schools will provide full opportunities for the participation by, and then we list the different types of parents. And then the sentence pauses with a comma and then says, by among other things. My question is, what are we providing opportunities for participation in? Like, we're, it just, to me, the sentence seems to hang off that there should, is it participation in education? And then maybe make it two sentences to say, among other things, by providing information on student progress four times a year. Because that left me wondering, what are we providing participation in?
I'm sorry. Can you show me again where you're at?
Okay. The third paragraph, the first sentence, the district and its schools will provide opportunities for the participation by parents of children with limited.
There is, there is requirements under the law that we make sure that we highlight those particular groups, and that we provide support so that there are no barriers to them being, being participants in their children's education. And that comes right out of the statute.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay. So, so.
And so we didn't want to limit it to.
In education.
We have to be careful here that we don't say it's just these things.
Okay.
So we may find another way to maybe.
Make that a little.
But.
Clearer.
Yeah. But that was, that's the reason for that there.
Okay. Because, yeah, it almost, it almost seemed like maybe a second, a break after that because, and then the other thing I noticed.
It's really run on, yes.
Yeah.
Yes, it is. And if you look at the federal legislation, it's just like that.
I do. Okay.
I agree.
Okay. That, and then just for the last part of that sentence, it's, it's still the same sentence, but the last two lines on that paragraph, upon request in alternative formats.
Yes.
I'd get rid of that comma because I'd say, to the extent practical goes with the formats. And then that way, you don't have that comma right after formats, formats. And then my question is, just, now that that's technical gone, how is the providing information to these identified students four times a year, how is that different than a report card that they get four times?
It's not. It's not. But it's acknowledging, when, when NCLB was written back in 2001, there were actually precedent across the country that parents were not getting progress reports on their children. And so they put into the federal law a minimum of four times a year. We've been doing that for a long time. It's no big deal. But that's what, that's what the federal law says is the minimum. But because unfortunately, in many places, that was not the case. So. Anything else?
Anyone else? Candace?
Ron may have to weigh in on this, but I would like to see if there's a way we could squeeze in mention of the strategic plan. And I'm thinking maybe.
It's in the regs?
Well, but, but how about in, in F, where it talks about parents, guardians, goes on, and then says informing, influencing, and creating school policies, practices, and programs, including the Carson City School District Strategic Plan. Perhaps we could add it in there. I, I think it should be mentioned in the policies. But Ron, what do you think?
Just to play devil's advocate, what after, say, the board changes or whatever, and in 2017, there's not a strategic plan.
That's why.
Do we have to go back and redo this policy?
Right. That's why it is spelled out in the, in the regs that we'll bring to you next week. Because it is, and that, that's why this part of it is purposely a little bit more vague. It includes all those things, but it's a little bit more vague.
Well, the regulations will be, are more specific. It should be the other way around. The policies are sort of the umbrella for the district. So to me, the school district strategic plan should be, these are the, these are the policies, not in the regulations.
I have an idea. What if you were to put, or strategic plans, make it lowercase, or you're not specifying the strategic pa- plan in power for 2017, so that that would then encompass any future strategic plans?
We could just say, and strategic plans. Does that work?
Yeah.
Okay.
If it's in lowercase.
Okay. That's easy. Does that work?
Strategic plan should never go away. Thank you.
We agree, but you never know. Any other questions, comments?
Okay.
Okay. This is for discussion only. Thank you, Ms. Duckery. Moving on to number 12, approval of the consent agenda for possible action.
I move that the Carson City School Board of Trustees approve consent agenda items AC, D, J, and K as submitted.
Second by Lynette. Is there any more board discussion? Any public comment? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Agenda approves. Number 13, request for future agenda topics.
Just, just not a request, but just to say thank you. This, this publication is outstanding, Mr. Stokes. This is outstanding. And I hope every legislator, and then some, will get this. This is absolutely beautiful. So thank you. Really outstanding.
Thank you, trustee Stoll. And I'll give due credit to the great marketing and PR staff that exists in Clark County School District. They, but, but truly, the superintendents have worked for about a year on that, getting ready for the legislative session. And it shows a, a nice, uniform, understanding of the issues, and a desire and a cohesiveness amongst the superintendents and school districts in the state to bring that unified approach to the legislation.
Oh, I am. I didn't see that.
That never happened to me in school. I was always the S's. That was kind of the tail end of thing.
Yeah. No from W's. Kind of liked it that way. Any other? Joe?
Not for any specific future agenda item, Mr. Stokes, but I just wanted to bring it up as information. A client I'm working with on an unrelated project made me aware of some educational playgrounds that are out there. And I started thinking about the playground we put in at Boarderwick Elementary School. And these guys do larger playgrounds that certainly now as a district, we couldn't afford. But it lends itself to kind of community partnering with the city and whatnot. But they're, it got me thinking about our STEM labs and things like that. And they do everything from playgrounds that, that are built mimicking, say, the solar system and things like that. And it was just fantastic. And I was going to just provide you the brochure, just for future knowledge, if, if in your conversations it ever comes up. It's a great idea. It's a bit more than we could fund, certainly. But, but it's a great idea nonetheless, and I'd hate to forget about it.
Ron?
This is maybe not a future agenda item, since this is Lynette's last meeting. I'm going to take this opportunity to say, Lynette, I really enjoyed serving with you on this board. And I always look forward to saying, Madam President. And I just, I, I just can't say enough, just, just enough good things about, you know, what you've done and how much I appreciate just serving on the board with you. Candace, I'll be able to speak to next week, or next meeting. But Lynette, just, just stay around and stay involved.
I wasn't planning on saying anything, but I just wanted to thank all of you. It's been such an honor and a pleasure working with each and every one of you. Thanks for putting up with me. And I've learned so much. It's amazing how time flies so quickly. And you feel like after four years, you're really got the hang of things. And then life gets in the way. I just feel like I need to really focus on my kids now that they're getting older. And pretty soon, they'll be going to college, hopefully. So really, thank you, all of you. And this is just such a special, spectacular school district. So thank you.
Thank you. And any other comments? We're out of here. Meeting adjourned.